All right, well, it is five o'clock. It's Monday, January sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. This is the first meeting of the new year, regular meeting of the city council, the city of Cape Girardeau. We are obviously on online conducting our meeting. Thanks to everyone, staff, for getting this put together. Thanks for everyone to being for being here and anyone joining us live or later as as this proceeds. We welcome you. We're very thankful to have this opportunity to do our meeting this way, given given the circumstances in the city right now. We will just proceed with our meeting just as we always do, and I even have a flag so we can do our pledge of allegiance as always. So as always, we always begin our meetings with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I understand Father Hearth is not able to be here tonight. Is that correct? Still correct? I'm happy to lead the invocation tonight if you all would bow your heads and then we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity through the technology to meet, and we pray that you will be with us as always as we conduct the business of this great city. We pray especially for those tonight who continue to have difficulties as a result of the recent ice storm. And we thank you so much for the men and women who are still out or out and about assisting our citizens, making repairs, and we pray for their continued health and success in those endeavors. It is in your holy name we pray. Amen. All right, let's stand and we will do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all. All right. Thank you all. I hope that didn't seem hokey. I wanted to try to conduct things as we always have. We don't have any study session or presentations tonight. We'll begin with communications and reports from council. And I would like to lead off tonight with a lot of information for the citizens about what has been going around on around the city in the past few days and and want to update everyone on 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 staff and department issues. So I wanted to share first that due to the ice storm that we've seen here over the weekend, the city of Cape saw up to around six hundred customers actually lose power, and that number is sitting around eighty at this point. And I'd like to alert the public to a number of things. Oh, sorry. Yes, thank you. Trevor, Polly has pulled up kind of a map of the affected areas. Trevor, I guess that area in red is kind of where we're seeing the most outages.
He's on mute.
He's on mute. Okay.
There we go. Yes, the red is in Missouri. You have yellow over here for Illinois.
Okay.
Bring it into the to the Cape Girardeau area. These are multiple areas. Of you'll have ten or twelve here, ten or twelve more here, two fifty. The green ones, you have one, one to five or one to ten.
Okay, those are clusters then of
That's it. Those are big clusters.
Yeah.
And these are smaller ones.
Okay.
Now, this changes every ten minutes with an update. So during the ice storm, we went up to eight hundred or more at one time. But Ameren's been very vigilant about doing repairs quickly, and this has been going down all day long, down to a lower number.
Great. Great. Thank you. Well, I wanted to just give a quick update, and I'll go through this as quickly as I can just to let everybody know about what the city staff has been involved in. At the airport, crews de-iced and kept runways cleared since two AM Sunday morning. There were some commercial flights that were canceled, but the airport remained open for any necessary medical, military, general aviation traffic, and several flights occurred did occur today. The Cape Fire Department responded responded to fourteen line-down calls that involved arcing or live wires, one motor vehicle accident with injuries, seven lift assists, five medical assists, two fire alarms, a technical issue, one flight standby, and two building fires since eight AM Sunday. So they've been very busy. Cape PD responded to three minor motor vehicle crashes. The Cape Parks and Rec Department cleared many city facilities and some downtown lots. The Osage Center opened today at six AM for fitness and to serve as a warming center, and the Shawnee Center also opened today to to provide warmth for anybody who needs it. The Public Works Department pre-treated hills, bridges, and primary streets late last week. The staff also participated in several National Weather Service conference calls and internal conference calls. Public Works responded to sixteen calls for downed trees and limbs Saturday night through Sunday evening. Crews reported at ten PM Sunday evening then to salt city streets in an attempt to keep any additional smaller amounts of precip from freezing on the roads. And crews were still salting until noon today. They continue to respond to to many additional calls for downed trees and limbs. But in addition, the regular operations of Public Works resumed service today. Alliance Water responded to a six-inch water main break on Friday afternoon, but they do not think that was weather-related. And the Perryville Booster Pump Station did lose power, but thankfully, the backup generator worked as designed. That's a good thing to report. I want to run through a quick a few quick things that Ameren has been putting out. There there's some really important safety things, and especially as we may continue to see downed power lines. I think our public really needs to pay close attention. In case of a power outage, the the most crucial thing, I think, is they're warning everyone to stay away from downed power lines and report the outage immediately. They have a phone number, which is eight hundred five five two seven five eight three, and that's the fastest way for folks to report a lack of power. And you can go online as well if you have a phone at www.amerin.com/missouri/ outage-center. There's also some texting that you can get from Ameren in an app if folks really need to stay updated. The the power lines are the chief concern. Please, they're urging everyone, do not go near a power line, and when in doubt about what kind of line it is, just stay away from all of them. Serious injury and death can can result, so always just call Ameren or nine-one-one immediately. Changing subjects, I just wanted to mention that on tonight's consent agenda, there are several water and sewer infrastructure issues that we're going to be dealing with, both starting and finalizing really millions of dollars in improvements to our systems here. And I wanted to just highlight the great work from our administration, from the Public Works Department, and several other partners in all of the planning and improvements and financing that has gone into all of that. Obviously, we've been talking a great deal over the past year about our need for higher water rates to help fund massive needs in our water treatment system. But these improvements that we're talking about tonight are the result of very smart financial decisions after lengthy planning has really gone into figuring out what has been been needed. And I really applaud the city administration for getting all that taken care of. And then just lastly, I I wanted to offer condolences from the city to the Rust family, who lost their husband and father Gary Rust yesterday after he was in several months of hospice. Mr. Rust, as we all know, was certainly a very influential member of our community. He was a state representative. He was a businessman, benefactor here in Cape, and there are a lot of great things already being shared about the impact that that he's had on the city of Cape. We, as a city, will will offer some more formal sentiments at our next council meeting, but just right now, I just wanted to share that the entire Rust family is in our thoughts and prayers. And that's it for me. Other council members wishing to share comments? Dan?
I'm just gonna chime in and just thank the city staff for everything that they've done over the past couple of days. Really, if you look around this community, the the response to this ice storm and snowfall has been incredible. City streets are passable. Everything looks really solid. So thank you to all the city staff and every department that that gave it their all and really jumped in for this. Southeast Missouri, you know, we get some really interesting weather, and this just is one of those instances where it starts out as it starts out as sleet, then goes to rain, then jumps to ice, then back to rain, then back to snow. And so it's just due to the the duty and the and the the planning and and the deployment that the city staff makes that really kind of keeps this this whole operation running. So thank you to all city staff.
Anyone else?
I just I just echo that to all the great work the city did, and particularly the pre-treatment of the roads and everything makes a huge difference. You can tell when you go through our roads versus some roads in some other communities. Our city staff, our city employees did a really great job.
Very true.
Hey, yeah, this is Dave Cantrell here. You mentioned the Osages, but the Salvation Army has opened their warming center. Worked there twice, but they have, because of their bylaws, they can't open it unless they have fully manned, even though I think their manning level is too high, that precludes opening some. There's there are really simple training you can go to, or if anybody, if you know of anybody that's inclined to to do so so that they can warm and they can open that, not just in this week, but we're gonna have other cold days ahead. So just something to think about.
Anyone else on the council? Yeah. Okay, we will move on for discussion items. We don't have any advisory board applicants tonight. Dr. Haskin, would you like to do the consent agenda review?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We added five, six, seven, and eight. And as the mayor pointed out, these are some things that we've been working on for several years in terms of trying to accumulate the necessary resources to try to address the water problem that we have. And so I guess we'll start with number five, and that is to execute an agreement with ACME contractors for the Cape Rock Water Treatment Line System and Chemical Feed Improvement. So we're excited about that, something we've been talking about for a while. I think we have some additional funds that we got through ARPA to help execute that 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 improvement. Of course, number six, we want to accept the improvements and authorize final payment to lumpy concrete finishing for the two thousand and twenty-four asphalt overlay program. Number seven, we want to accept the improvements and authorize final payment to them as well for the two thousand and twenty-three street, concrete street repairs. And finally, number eight, we're ready to accept improvements and authorize final payment to Institute Form Technologies for the Cured and Placed Pipe Project. Again, that's another project that we've been working on from for quite some time, and and staff has been very active and involved in in trying to ensure that we address some of those needs. Mayor, that concludes the consent review for tonight.
Okay, thanks. We'll move into regular session and begin with the call to order and the real call vote for attendance. Ms. Conrad?
Mayor Kinder?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Cantrell?
Here.
Mr. Essex?
Here.
Mr. Bliss?
Here.
All right, thanks. Council, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor then of agenda approving the agenda as shown, please say aye. Anyone opposed? That agenda carries. No public hearings tonight. We'll start then with the consent agenda. Mr. Young, if you would please read that.
Bill twenty-four one forty-eight, an ordinance approving the record plat of ponder subdivision. Bill twenty-four one forty-eight, ordinance approving the record plat of ponder subdivision. Bill twenty-four one forty-one, an ordinance calling an election in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri to elect a council member in Ward Five designated at the time of holding the election, authorizing directing the city clerk to give notice of the election. Bill twenty-four one forty-one, ordinance calling an election in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri to elect a council member in Ward Five designated at the time of holding the election, authorizing directing the city clerk to give notice of the election. Bill twenty-four one forty-two, an ordinance submitting chapter fifteen of the city code by extending the one-half or one percent transportation sales tax and re-establishing the city transportation trust fund and calling election in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri on the question whether to approve the sales tax extension, designated at the time of holding the election, authorizing directing the city clerk to give notice of the election. Bill twenty-four one forty-two, an ordinance submitting chapter fifteen of the city code by extending the one-half or one percent transportation sales tax and re-establishing the city transportation trust fund and calling election in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri on the question of whether to approve the sales tax extension, designated at the time of holding the election, authorizing directing the city clerk to give notice of the election. Bill twenty-five oh one, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute agreement, ACME Constructors, Inc., for the Cape Rock Water Treatment Plant Line System and Chemical Feed Improvements.
All right, thank you. Council, we have a consent agenda. Is it? Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor then of the consent agenda, please say aye. Anyone opposed? The agenda carries. Nothing was removed from the consent agenda, so we have a number of new ordinances tonight. First is Bill twenty-five oh two, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to set to the settlement agreement and release of all claims between the city of Cape Girardeau and James L. Drury, deceased, by and through Diane Drury Janet and Mid-America Hotels Corporation. This is the first reading. Doug Gannon?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Dr. Haskin. This ordinance basically accepts the Second Amendment to the settlement agreement between the Mid-America Hotel Corporation and the city of Cape Girardeau. The the biggest thing that this Second Amendment includes is development of a two-point-four-acre parcel of land at the Sportsplex for development of an additional parking lot. Now, that parking lot will sit at the southwest quadrant of Jim Drury Way and Limbaugh Lane, and it will allow for additional parking. As you all may or may not be aware, the parking at the Sportsplex is really challenging on big event weekends. So the the Mid-America Hotel Corporation, Diane and Diane Drury, as well as the city staff, have identified a real parking problem at the Sportsplex. So the Second Amendment to the settlement agreement paves the way for an additional parking lot. It also is going to allow us to use some some proceeds from the restaurant tax to help with development of the outdoor sports complex at Shawnee Park.
All right, thank you. Council, is there a motion to approve Bill twenty-five oh two?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Further discussion?
I don't think you had said it, but this is going to approximately double the amount of parking, correct? Is at the Sportsplex?
It's gonna add two hundred ninety-three additional spots. So the the parking is basically going to mirror the the parking lot that is to the the southeast of of the Sportsplex. So it'll be for two hundred ninety-three cars. We think that's gonna be adequate to to handle the overflow. As you all know, right now, cars are parked up and down Veterans Memorial Drive. They're parked on Jim Drury Way. They're parked in the grass, and so it just has posed a real challenge. We don't see the events at the Sportsplex getting any smaller. So development of this parking lot and this two hundred ninety-three cars is gonna be extremely important. We feel like that's gonna be sufficient to handle the overflow parking.
Doug, do you have a sense of the timeline to to complete this project? Is it city staff completing it, or are we bidding it out?
It'll be Public Works and Parks and Rec staff. We have not talked about a specific timeline yet. However, we really don't feel like it'll take that long to develop. It's gonna involve two curb cuts along Jim Drury Way. The the parking lot is gonna be comprised basically of a commercial base gravel, which, if you all have ever been over to the Jackson Soccer Park, it'll it'll look similar to that. We'll have parking blocks within the parking area. We'll have a perimeter that will prevent people from driving off into the grass and prevent rain runoff. So we really don't feel like it'll take long to develop. Once we get the curb cuts done, pour the concrete aprons, and then we will basically just bring the the ground out there where the parking lot will be the two-point-four acres to subgrade, and then we'll bring it back to grade with a commercial base product that will, and as cars drive across this, it'll pack down just like concrete. So we anticipate this moving fairly quickly once we get this the Second Amendment approved.
Great, thanks.
Well, and I really, I like I like all this in conjunction with what we're gonna be talking about here. A few more bills down the line about the, you know, the establishing some no parking on the on the streets in that immediate area, really just creating overall a safer situation for anyone parking and walking around the Sportsplex and and all of that. I really would like to just take a second to applaud Dr. Haskin, your administration, as well as Diane Drury and 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 her team, and and along with with the Park and Rec Department, too. This is just, you know, a continuation, a further development of of a very good public-private partnership. This whole, you know, this whole concept started many years ago, and and this is a really great development in all of that. And I I just really want to thank you guys, especially, I know it's taken some good time, you know, to really think through and and move us in the in a really strong direction for the future, and this is certainly that. So thanks. Anyone else? Any other comments? All right, hearing none then. All in favor of Bill twenty-five oh two, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Next is Bill twenty-five oh three, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for professional and construction services with Penzoil Construction Company, Inc. for the youth outdoor sports complex. This is the first reading. Mr. Gannon?
Thank you. The the youth outdoor complex, sports complex, is a PRS two project. It was a project that was identified when the tax initiative passed in two thousand and eighteen. So basically, we have gone through an extensive selection process, issued an RFP back in June of of twenty-four. We had a committee comprised of six different members, our staff and our board members that that reviewed those proposals. We received six proposals, reduced it down to four, and did interviews and and presentations with the four contractors that that we shortlisted, and we selected Penzoil Construction for the project. They were clearly the 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 frontrunner in the selection process. Not only did they have the lowest bid, but they had the best over plan for the site where we're gonna put the complex. And they also did extensive homework on some challenges that that's that site poses. So we're really excited about the possibility to move forward with with Penzoil Construction. I'm excited to get this project underway.
Council, is there a motion to approve Bill twenty-five oh three?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Any comments?
Doug, what's the time timeline on that as to when those fields could be up and in operation?
Well, we are looking at starting clearing the site this spring, actually, late winter, early spring. Then we'll start moving some dirt, early summer, late spring, early summer. So we anticipate having them ready for in the spring of two thousand and twenty-six. The April, April of twenty-six is when we're gonna start trying to host some larger tournaments down at Shawnee Park. And that's that's in Penzoil. We've discussed that timeline with them, and they feel comfortable that they can reach that timeline.
Thank you.
In reading the documents that were part of the agenda, it said that this is just west of like where the current fields are. Is that is that right?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
And and the reason we chose that site is because it was it's very, it's right by the existing complex, and and we're gonna be able to share a lot of resources that we currently have at Shawnee Park. So having everything in one spot is gonna be really, really efficient for us. And it's going to allow five additional fields at two hundred and fifty foot, which is going to accommodate the 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 youth size or the smaller baseball softball tournaments. So we'll have a we'll have a total of thirteen fields at the site now down there, which staff, the team here, has done extensive work on contacting tournament directors and making contact with different folks, and and we're really excited about this project, and and we think that it's gonna give us the opportunity down the road to continue to draw large events on the weekends that will continue to bring a lot of people to Cape Girardeau.
I like, too, that it's a, I mean, obviously, the accessibility from Highway seventy-four and from the east across the river is is great, but, you know, it's close to, it's easily accessible from I-55 as well for folks coming in. So it's gonna be a great addition, I know, to our to our Park and Rec Department.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a second to applaud not only Doug and Scott and Penny and Cade and your whole team, but also the Parks and Rec Board, the Parks and Rec Foundation Board, Danny Essner, people that have put some real sweat equity into figuring this out, because this is actually a result of the voters who passed PRS two saying that they wanted to have a youth ball field complex. And and it it became pretty evident after it was passed that the dollar amount that was passed, to do it correctly in order to be attractive and market to these larger tournaments, it was going to be cost prohibitive just to acquire the land. And so this innovative approach to use land we have and repurpose it that otherwise would not have a very good use. And the fact that the synergies that it creates tying it into the existing ball field complexes, being able to tie it into, you know, moving the the football fields across seventy-four, making it more visible along with the Jefferson Aquatics Facility and tying that all together. I think in long-term vision-wise, it makes a lot of sense. It's gonna be exciting. It's gonna be highly visible from seventy-four on both sides. And I just applaud you guys for all of your work and innovative approach that you took to this, as well as then working with Dr. Haskins and your team, working with Diane, and figuring out how to use multiple sources of funds to make this what it needs to be in order to remain on the the front edge of sports tourism, which has been so vital to our our Cape Girardeau economy. So good work.
Any other comments? Questions? All right, hearing none then. All in favor of Bill twenty-five oh three, please say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill twenty-five oh four, an ordinance accepting permanent drainage easements and temporary construction easements from various property owners for the PRS two stormwater projects in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Is Casey Brunkie available to comment on?
Mayor, care of that for Casey tonight?
I'm sorry?
I'm taking care of this one for Casey.
Oh, great, Trevor, sorry. Mr. Polly?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Dr. Haskin. The ordinance accepts thirteen permanent drainage easements and eighteen temporary construction easements from various properties for the PRS two stormwater projects in Cape. This project consists of replacing upgrading street crossings drainage at the following locations, Westwood Drive, Lynnwood Drive, Melrose, Lisa Drive, Curable Road. This is the the construction is to to be expected to start in February two thousand and twenty-five, and this project was bid it out and awarded to Roanoke Concretes.
All right, Council, is there a motion to approve Bill twenty-five oh four?
So moved.
Jurassic, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion?
Oh, I'd just like to say that there are gonna be a lot of people, Trevor and Ward Five, happy that this is happening. I get get a lot of calls about stormwater, and particularly in these areas. So I'm really excited to to see this project get started.
I agree, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I I've had so many conversations over the years. You know, obviously, we we don't have to worry just about the flooding from the Mississippi River. It's all the mud, all the water that is flowing overland down through the city. And it Ward Five is where a lot of it really piles up. So people, you know, I I think that the parks projects get a lot of, you know, highlight from the the PRS two programs, but it's the it's the it's the S in PRS that is pretty important to the the stormwater projects. And and I'm very appreciative of the fact that the city was able to find some ARPA funding to help with these to help with these projects as well. I think grants pay, the grant is paying close to eighty percent of of some of these costs. So that's that's huge. So thanks to, again, the administration for getting that financial piece of it put together. Any further comments on this? All right, hearing none then, all those in favor, uh, of bill twenty-five, oh, four, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Uh, next we have bill twenty-five, oh, five, an ordinance approving the record plat of Weston subdivisions, first reading. Pull, you have a comment? Yeah.
Yes, uh, this ordinance approving the record plat of Weston subdivision. The ordinance approves, uh, the plat for one commercial lot subdivision at twelve seventeen and twelve twenty-five William Street. Uh, this was, uh, taken to P and Z on October tenth through recommended approval with a seven in favor and zero opposition.
All right. Is there a motion to approve bill twenty-five, oh, five?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none then, all in favor of bill twenty-five, oh, five, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Two more. Uh, bill twenty-five, oh, six, an ordinance approving the record plat of Mid-America Crossings fourth subdivision. It's the first reading. Pull.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this one approves the record plat for two commercial subdivision lots at twenty-five, oh, two and twenty-five, ten Veterans Memorial Drive. Uh, this was taken to planning in Sony on November thirteen, twenty-twenty-four, but with a recommendation of approval with an eight in favor and one in opposition.
Okay. Council, is there a motion to approve bill twenty-five, oh, six?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none then, all in favor of bill twenty-five, oh, six, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. And then lastly, we have bill twenty-five, oh, seven, an ordinance amending Schedule F of section twenty-six dash two eighty-nine of the city code related to no parking zones in various locations in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. This is the first reading. Mr. Polley?
Uh, this ordinance will establish no parking zones at Veterans Memorial Drive. There's gonna be one, two, three, four different locations where it's gonna be no parking, which was needed, which is in correlation with the new parking lot, and also Jim Dirk Drury Way on the south side, and it also repeals a no parking zone on Jim, Jim Drury Way north side from Veterans to Limbaugh Lane.
Great. Council, is there a motion to approve bill twenty-five, oh, seven?
So moved.
Second.
Do you, any further discussion?
This is, you know, I, I'm glad we're adding these new two hundred and ninety parking spaces, uh, you know, 'cause I do know that on a weekend, you drive past and people are lined up along, uh, those streets, so it's nice to be able to add, add the two ninety that are needed.
Yeah.
Well, and as someone who frequently parks there at those tournaments, it'll be nice, not just driving by it, but, um, so I do wanna clarify, we're removing the repeal, so basically, the only allowable parking outside of the parking lots around the sportsplex will be on the north side of Jim Drury Way, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, and with all the continued development out there, it's gonna be very important to keep that, that having that parking on those streets is, is dangerous, and then even pulling into the AC's, um, convenience store there, I, I do that a lot, and I, I still worry about all this stuff and look to see who's out there, so I think this is gonna be, uh, a big help traffic-wise, safety, from a safety point of view.
Well, Mark, you, Mark, you bring up a good point, too, you know, there's gonna be, uh, many years of further development out there, that, that's gonna, and, you know, in ten, ten years, we may not even recognize what's, what's going on out there, and, um, there'll be always gonna be further, um, you know, amendments to all of this, so, um, this is a, this is a great next step, though. I'm sorry, somebody else wanted to?
Yeah, that was me. Well, so will these, uh, no parking signs in this ordinance proceed, um, the, uh, building of the parking lot? I guess my question is, while it's not ideal right now, are we creating a bigger problem if we cut off, you know, what little parking people do have access to now while we're waiting on the parking lot to be completed?
I think we'll work with Parks Department and wait till that is completed, so we don't have a problem with issuing citations, and we're, and now, the new parking lot is a solution, and I was out there Saturday, and we had cars parked all the way almost to the, uh, convenience store. They, our determine Saturday, a very good turnout, and, uh, it, uh, I don't think we need to put the no parking signs up, that's up to you all, until we get the lot constructed.
I, that's, I don't know, excellent, excellent point, I think they need to go together. I don't know if that needs to be an amendment to the, you know, the ordinance or what, but...
I, I don't, I don't think so, uh, Mr. Essex, um, you know, we, we, that, that's, that's clearly, uh, an administration issue that we will certainly address, um, when the time is, is right, but, uh, I think all of that makes, makes a lot of sense in terms of ensuring, uh, that we don't, uh, create more of a bottleneck for ourselves. Uh, so whenever we start to park in and it's complete, uh, then that's when those signs will go up, and I believe, uh, Diane and, and Dan Drury would, would, would agree with that approach as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions, concerns? All right, all in favor then of bill twenty-five, oh, seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Uh, we don't have any appointments or other business, and so all we need to do is adjourn, is there a motion for adjournment?
Mayor, before, before you adjourn, uh, Mayor and Council, uh, I don't believe anyone did raise their hand, um, during the new ordinances, but I think we need to, uh, make sure that there wasn't anyone from the public who wanted to comment on any of the new ordinances before we sign off.
Good point.
I'm, I'm, and I'm sorry, I'm not seeing, um, any of that, so I, I, um...
I can see the, I can see the public, uh, that are online, and none, none of them have raised their hand to speak. Nicolette, have you received any phone calls requesting to speak?
Uh, no, ma'am.
If, uh, respectfully, I do have somebody that would like to make a couple of comments about one of the ordinances.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I think most of you know me, and, uh, I wanna make a few comments about the, the new youth baseball complex. I'm really excited about it, and there's multiple reasons that it's important to bring this project to fruition. First and foremost, we need to honor our commitment to the voters, and I'm kind of echoing the, the comments that Nate made earlier. Uh, I was involved with passing the first PRS back in two thousand and eight, and when that was passed, two previous attempts to pass a park tax had failed. And so strategically, we made some changes, and two of the things that we did, I think that were very critical, was one, we utilized a sunset, a ten-year sunset, but we also specifically identified every project that we were gonna fund with that money. And then after it passed, we were very intentional about getting all those projects done exactly the way we said they were gonna be done, to create credibility with the voters. And as a result of that, when it came up for renewal in two thousand and eighteen, it passed by Y-Marge because we did exactly what we said we were gonna do. So I think it's critical that we continue to do that with the PRS two projects, and it's been seven years since that tax was renewed, so it's, it's time overdue to, to bring this project to fruition. One of the challenges that we had was finding a suitable location, and if, uh, the folks there aren't very, aren't familiar with the, the site itself, you would never think you could put a baseball complex there. It's a hill covered with trees, it has a ravine adjacent to it with a creek and a stormwater or, or sanitary sewer line running through it, but, uh, through creativity, we've been able to, uh, take that tract of land and make it work. And as Nate said, uh, this is very critical from a, uh, sports tourism standpoint. Uh, we've kinda had a head start in a lot of the other communities in the area, but, but everybody else is wanting to jump on the bandwagon, and he may or may not be aware of this, but Paducah and McCracken County have formed a sports tourism commission, and they're developing a sixty million dollar outdoor sports complex, primarily to attract tournaments like we're doing, and so we feel it's critical that we continue to be competitive with Paducah and all the other communities in the area that are doing similar things, because sports tourism is a really big deal for our community, it fills up a lot of hotel rooms on the weekends. A third reason is, for many years, the, the ball fields that our, our kids have played baseball on have really been inadequate. A lot of those fields shared ground with the fair, and you know what happens, and invariably, we have at least one rain day during fair week, and, and those ball fields end up getting torn up and they have to be repaired. So with the new baseball complex, or particularly older kids, you're gonna be able to play on really high-quality fields, you know, as they end their youth baseball careers. And the final thing that I think is gonna be really cool, the, the entire area where this baseball complex is going is gonna be transformed, and in the past, I know there's been comments from parents that they're not comfortable taking their kids to the Jefferson Aquatic Center because it's inaccessible, it's not very visible, they're uncomfortable going there, and that, all of that's gonna change dramatically. When this project is done, uh, that aquatic center's been, gonna be contiguous with the rest of the sports complex, and that abancement on, on the north side of Highway seventy-four is going to be removed. We've already got permission from, uh, MoDOT to do that, so when you're driving down Highway seventy-four, you have an unobstructed view of the two new football soccer fields and the aquatic center, and with the new interchange that's being opened at Minnesota, you'll have very good accessibility to the aquatic center as well. So when it's all said and done, it's gonna be something that all of us can be very proud of, so, once again, I'm, I know I'm being a little bit redundant, I kinda repeating a lot of the things that Nate said, but this is something that we're very excited about, and I can't wait to see what it looks like when it's done. So thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to share my excitement with you.
Well, and Mr. Essner, I, I, I'll just like to echo and, and, and reinforce the concept, but these things have been in the works and planned for a very long time, and so, um, and you have been involved in, uh, I know probably most, if not all, of that planning and those efforts, um, uh, with your, with your, um, service on the, on the, uh, advisory board, the Parks Advisory Board, so, um, thanks to you, as, as Nate said, um, properly, you know, there, there've been a lot of volunteer citizens who have been promoting this whole concept, uh, again, for a long, long time, and it's definitely one that's very, very needed for, um, for really a variety of, of reasons, but, um, I, I do love the, what you, uh, the point you made about that, that whole area, um, is really going to be, um, transformed in, in, in a way, when, uh, we've seen already, um, some great investment, um, along that corridor, and, and, um, and that will just really benefit the, the community, the South Cape community and the community, the entire community of Cape as well, so really looking forward to a lot of that. Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, any other, uh, I'm sorry, and Mr. Gannon, was there someone else that you, that you have there that wanted to speak?
No, ma'am, that's all we have.
Okay. Anything else then? For the good of the group? Nope. Okay, is there a motion then to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of adjourning then, please say aye.
Aye.
You wanna pose? We are adjourned, thank you all very much. Stay warm, stay safe.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everyone.
Have a good evening.